Patriots Park and Moncrief Park restroom facilities that they were commissioned to do. So I'm gonna start off by letting them do that. Y'all introduce yourselves and let you just...
...be here today. I'm Bob Luke with LPK and this is Caleb Luke with LPK. We've been working with Gary and we appreciate the opportunity to share with you what we think is a good initial start. This is schematic design. It is not set in concrete at all. We tried to factor in a lot of input that we've heard from Gary, from others. Our main goals are to make it functional, make it safe, make it aesthetically pleasing. And the real big important part is to make it something that is economical from a life cycle standpoint. Not only initial cost, but a balance of initial cost and life cycle cost. One of the main problems with public facilities is how you take care of them. Vandalism, not enough funds to maintain them through time. So we're gonna talk about that a little bit today. So to start with, we've got, let's start with Moncrief Park. And we can tell you, we've looked at all your parts and this park probably has the most potential in many ways. This is a beautiful piece of property. It gets a lot of activity. And we originally thought about putting this particular building up at the top of the hill and working with his existing shed that was there. The problem is, it is, I won't say impossible, but almost impossible to make ADA work up there. In everything we do now, we have to meet ADA. And the standards are more strict now than they've ever been before. And also, we can tell you, and we've got some cost studies we can look at. And we will be providing you cost studies at the next little jump off point, once we have feedback from you today. The cost to deal with old facilities and try to retrofit them many times is worse than trying to start from scratch, okay? And we also looked at the pool and how you use these facilities, safety, visibility, and all those factors. So we're looking at locating this pavilion, D West existing facility there, just south of the pool area, next to the new beach volleyball area there. And that's where really there's a lot of activity and people. And there's a lack of shade opportunities there. A need for some new nicer facilities there.
Do we have a Google, do we have a Google visual of that at all?
Uh, we did. I took it out because it was so fuzzy.
Okay, okay.
And we just did the visual site plan. We can probably get to one that we need to come out. But the other thing is that is always controversial today, you read the newspaper. Gender of restrooms. Controversial topic, okay? A hot topic, heavily debated. ADA tells us now that if we do restrooms, we're almost required to have two, unless we get to certain use numbers. Unfortunately, your use numbers on most of these put you where you don't have to have two, okay? And so I would recommend that these are actually single user units. And the beauty of that is, it allows you to make them unisex. So you get out the entire argument and political debate about gender number one. It also creates a lot better privacy scenario there, okay? And we're setting these up where each one has baby changing or diaper changing stations in them. They're very flexible, okay? And we'll come back and talk about how they're maintaining materials a little bit later. But they all are ADA accessible, they're all very flexible. They all have a water fountain slash water refill station in front of them. We no longer do water fountains. We really encourage people to use water refill stations as well. You know, we get all of those into consideration. But at the same time, if you look at the outline of this, what we're looking at is, this is the enclosed portion, but all of this will be the covered pavilion. So that it can be used for people to rent or rent the pavilion or the space there for private functions. But if not, it creates a great shade or private place right there where all the activity is for volleyball or pool for people to use.
What's the orientation?
Orientation on this is, this would be, that's the mural wall and that would be facing north. So this is the wall you would see driving up, okay? And I guess, you know, I could do it just...
You can. Be careful.
I like that. So, one other aspect we talked about was, you've got the trail quilts, public art. We're really big believers in public art. And who should lead public art? No one should lead even more than he should, okay? So the opportunity to have at least one mural wall on each one of these is there, okay? So we wanna do that. And we're gonna have a building materials that are, gonna have a graffiti proof coating on them, okay? On the audio material, it'll be important. But we wanna put a special mural topic or material on there. So you can have those murals prepared. But you can also change them and preserve them from time to time if you choose to do that. Because there will be works of art. So we feel real good about that. But this will be low maintenance, be LED lighting, things like that. And we'll go back to that a little bit later. So, you can see the general profile of this. This west elevation will end up being covered, will be a large mural wall there. But it's a single slope roof. It's simple construction. We wanna use Lexan, not glass. It's a very tough material. It's not, it's not gonna yellow. It's not breakable. We wanna get a lot of natural light in there. We think it'll work well. That's what it will look like. It's very clean, it's very crisp. You have natural light in there. The lights that are in there will not have switches, they will be on photo sales. We don't want things like to turn things on and off. We don't want you have to maintain things. Hey, good to see you, sir.
Hi, good to see you.
So that's kind of, that's the first one there. The thing that we've talked about and debated, we'd like some thought on is, do you move this pavilion back and forth? You can shift this where it could be at the end and create a larger space at one or the other, which might be better. Something you need to think about. Or is it better so that people can segregate in groups? Now, people are not always comfortable all being in one group. Sometimes people like to be able to segregate, be in different families or different groups. Or sometimes kids in the area, adults in the area. But that's kind of why we have it now. You could almost have three different groups of people meeting here easily. But that's the decision you may wanna make before we get, you know, that dialogue.
Okay. Gary, do we normally, when somebody rents a pavilion, we generally, they rent the whole thing, right? We're not, we're not normally segregating that. So as a public space, it would be whoever showed up and how they did it. But as a group, it would be a single group normally, correct?
For a group, it would make sense for it to be back there. If it were general times not ready, I think it would make more sense to be more centrally located, you know? And one works better for like, this would be better for the beach volleyball. This would work better for the pool aspects, et cetera. And how we access the pool apron and things like that.
Before you, oh, could you give us just general dimensions that you're talking about?
Again, uh, this is seventeen feet. This is twenty feet, seventeen by twenty feet, right there. Here overall is fifty-six feet by thirty feet.
Seventeen by thirty, is that what you said?
Seventeen by thirty. JL King. One of the largest obstacles we've run into is where to place this. Between Gary and Edward Kemp, I've seen more video footage of water running through this area than I've ever seen in my life. And this is probably the best place we've found. I can show you water running everywhere here, okay? But this is in a good location for the football field to be used. It serves the whole area as well as the football field. Also in terms of elevation, it appears to be the best location. But this is really more of a multi-use facility. It is to be a restroom facility, but it's also so when they're practicing football, they have an opportunity to use it as a changing facility. I wouldn't say a locker room, but a changing facility. This does create a male/female type situation, at least currently it does to some degree, okay?
No, to a whole degree.
I know, but you know, it's a wild world out there. So, at the end of the day, what we have is, we have the urinals and the ADA toilet on that side. The female on that side, changing benches on this side. And then a storage area there so that it can be used for storage for the park equipment, et cetera. And again, with a covered area with a water refill station and water fountain there as well. All of these will have tempered heat, a lot of ventilation, but no air conditioning. There was, there has been some talk that there may be the need to provide some cooling of some degree in this just because of the amount of people and the time of year you may use it. That's a, it's a borderline conversation there on that. But everything is washable and spray down capable as we look into it. It's the same construction methodology as before. And it's a simple construction. Let me give you some sizes on this. And this is thirty-three feet in this dimension, thirty-two feet in that dimension there. You have three urinals and a toilet. You have four toilets on that side. These are all stainless steel, pedal type facilities. I hate to use that term, but that's what it is. They're virtually indestructible. The lavatories are that way as well. They're mounted on countertops that are either concrete or polymer resin. They're virtually indestructible. And all piping will be secured, hidden, not visible or accessible. We strongly recommend automatic flushing devices. My people don't flush. I cannot tell you, but they don't flush. People don't like to touch. People are very concerned. They're very concerned about hygiene. So automatic flushing devices, enhanced free lavatories, what we strongly recommend there. And we want it to be as paperless as possible.
Is the size of the left and the size of the right identical?
In theory, it's supposed to be. I'm not gonna, it, it looks like it is, but it's supposed to be, yes, sir.
Okay, so if you took each one of those three that were clearly gender specific and turned them into something that wasn't gender specific, you could do that based on the size?
Correct.
Is that accurate? How much of a cost differential is that?
I don't know, but we can calculate that. We can do that. That's a good one. We can do that. And we'll be glad to.
Thank you.
The, but at the end of the day, we're going to recommend hand dryers, not paper towels. And I'm gonna be very candid with you. I would recommend a Dyson hand dryer.
They're great.
We can do sole surface, but I'm telling you, we've tried them all. There's not a better one out there. They, they work much better by far. The others make a lot of noise and don't do much. These will actually dry your hands, okay? So that's that one. Patriots is really a unique special little park, but you definitely need facilities there. So we have a small but very functional, single user unit there as well. We're allowed to do that because we're under the use numbers with ADA. But it works extremely well. It's intergender baby changing station, water refill there. It's tucked in the corner because we wanna make sure that there's a safe environment there as well. And it's a small, little neat, compact unit, you know? We wanna get some kind of clean, neat brand, but make things look pretty much uniform as possible. And we haven't picked final colors and final finishes to things, but that's the general overview of it as we approach it today. Construction methodology, we think, while we're looking at new materials and we're looking at not a conventional metal building as you think, we talked about metal bounds, but basically slick, all bones are either in wood. We're really looking to try to find a good recycled material for exterior bounds and interior that will work. But we're looking at conventional construction methodology. Something local contractors can do. Things very important to try to utilize our local construction market. So we have puddings and great beams. Peritephal slab would be a foreign slab. It's not a very expensive or heavy structure. A steel column regurter system would come up with our beams on top of that. Then we come with our purlins for the roof, have a metal panel system. We probably would not insulate this at all other than one thin coat, just to avoid condensation. And other than that, then we start picking up window supports and framings, light gauge metal stud system. We pick up the sockets, the patient. Then we come in with our wall, our Lexan windows and doors. And that would be it, so.
So there is, you don't have like a visual of what you would anticipate?
In terms of...
Hey, that's a drawing. I'm a picture, no, I'm a picture kinda gal.
I thought that was a picture of what it was gonna look like.
Okay, that's a drawing. But okay, something that's in existence, let me put it that way, something that you have...
We can, we can put those within a photograph of the site.
Well, you can direct me to a location and I can Google like anybody else, so it's just sort of a...
We can, we can, we had arrows, but the arrows are really too grainy to see well, you know?
Okay.
But, and we can probably pull them up now. Do you have access to Google?
I do.
Let's do that, let's cover that.
Well, while y'all are doing that, any questions?
Bob, how do these things ventilate? I mean, I...
We're going to have low ventilation slots down low at the bottom. And we're gonna have ventilation in the sidewalls of high with ventilation fan. We're gonna provide temperate air in terms of heating with probably electric infrared or either, it'll be electric, it'll be infrared more than likely, but no air conditioning at all.
There's something wrong when those things are being utilized somewhere anyway, I mean, signal, I mean, I don't, heat, some type of...
It's gonna be thermostat, it's gonna be thermostatically controlled, okay? But we plan on providing a lot of natural airflow as much as possible. Most of it will be natural, but the thermostat will kick in, provide heat when necessary.
This is almost like restroom facilities you'd see in national parks, I mean...
That's right. Fifty degrees is the temperature minimum that we would always wanna be above fifty degrees. We don't want it to be so comfortable, people wanna hang out in there. But we want it to be reasonable.
Yes, sir.
Can we zoom in?
Henry had a...
Yes, sir. The Dyson hand dryer. I agree with you with that because where I worked at, where we had, come out and warm your hands at where I worked at. And they lasted forever. And they're really good. It's like they're vacuum cleaners. They're not cheap, but they're working.
And they have a decent warranty on them too, don't they?
They have a real good warranty. If you got a problem, they don't ask any questions. They take it back.
Okay.
Can I make just one note? On the JL King, this is more just point of input. That one is a larger facility, yes. And there was a couple of goals, back when we started discussing this, a couple of goals mentioned about what we could do in the long-term vision with the park and that space. So that was larger, yes. We expect the football team to continue using that area. And that was one justification. But also, by putting a storage facility that can double as concessions using a roll-up door, allowing for flexibility and the potential for events. Because right now, hosting events in JL King Park, especially after hours, it is, you have to use a softball field and softball building. You're limited in parking there. The football field, by moving that direction for things like the community that is held over there now, you're able to kind of extend that parking, the on-street parking, other parking lots that are over there. So that was some of the thought process and early goings about why a larger restroom there, the ability to host for events, and also potentially doubling that storage as concessions to use for the same purpose, so.
Storing for a concession or to be a concession?
The storage room, but using a roll, to allow them for a roll-up door that can be used as concessions, things like that. It could be either. Just allowing for some flexibility of use for that store.
To like serve drinks out of there, so, correct, but not to cook there, correct?
Correct, correct. Just, yeah, just, just a, just to open it up, just, you know, serve, you know, drinks, chips, just a basic concession, not like, not a cooking facility.
Like sell candy bars, chips, and a drink.
So I would think then maybe when we go back and look at the drawings in a minute, that that might be something that...
And what we're talking about doing is, if you don't want to put in the overhead door now, we could block out parts so it could be added later date, we just have a block out for it. So that's... And also it'll accommodate those guys to come play rugby down there.
So, yeah, and that's the other thought is, with football team or anyone that we could have a use agreement with, if it ends up being much more useful as storage, then they, you know, we could potentially look at that. Or for events that wanna host over there, if that does become a long-term thing, those events frequently do request and need storage. They wanna store something overnight for whatever reason. So just the goal being flexibility of usage and with that in mind, so.
This would be Moncrief. The actual location, if I would, if we move the screen, actual location would be right there. That's what we're talking about. It really sits in well there. ADA works better. There's another thing, when we do public work, we've noticed is when people spend tax dollars, you like to be able to see it. Be able to see it. I'm not sure they would see it much up there or even figure out how to get to it. That's a great location. It really makes a lot better sense for serving more people. And if you do have some function, it's so much easier for people to get to. And we can kind of tie it in with that little group of trees right there.
So it sits right in front of the kiddie pool?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so the, the orientation of the, the high end of the pavilion would be towards the existing building and the low end?
We're gonna ask to be the high end up towards the existing pavilion. We're going to try to orient these roofs to take advantage of solar orientation. And we're going to explore the opportunity to do solar bounds. We'd really love to get these off of your electrical grid. We're gonna use all LED fixtures. The more independent we can make them, the better off it's gonna be and the less you have to deal with them. That's something we're calculating loads that we're getting at right now.
Cool, okay.
JL King, please, sir.
Down over there, you go. Left, you sure?
Tree, the tree, there you go.
The tree?
There's a tree icon that, oh, I'm sorry. I know, that's helpful. There you go.
Bone's green.
There you go. That was too far to look.
Anyway, these nice high water rivers that run right through here. The location is in that area right there. It really works well on the orientation of the football field. It also works well in terms of sight lines and height kind of system here. So that's the location for that.
So that's gonna be just north of the drainage area that drains east to west?
And there's a reasonable distance between these two. We haven't found a better place to, to serve that. We one time thought about putting it way up there, but that really doesn't work with other CD systems that are there. And it's fairly isolated up there. There are a lot more people that can utilize it in terms of users that can actually utilize it when it's down there.
Put it more centrally?
More central.
Yeah. Did you put...
No, no, I'm, I'm, I think centrally located makes a lot of sense. I just know that there is some pretty significant drainage area that's right there. And so whether, whether it's there and if it shifts a little bit more to the east or some little more up on the hill would be, what I would say is, before we do this, I just, we just need to make sure that we're not gonna have an issue.
Well, we, we're gonna check the flood elevations and work closely on that. And we're gonna have to be raising.
Yeah.
Thank you, please, sir.
One of these two.
Gotta go to twelve there, Joel.
There you go.
Twelve and Avenue.
Little left.
There you go, there's...
All right. There we go.
There we go.
There you go. Good job, Joe.
Working my job.
This one is going, we, we really kind of wrestle with where to put this. But this is really kind of isolated and a lot of activity sometimes. So we don't want it to be a problem where it is. So it's really just tucked back in the very corner. So it doesn't have a security problem for people. It also does a takeaway, but it's tucked in that corner right back there for right now. Single unit, small use, let's do whatever it is there.
Okay.
Mr. Luke, could you go back to your drawings?
Yes, we can. Certainly we can. I can, but thank you. And which one did you...
Just go to this next one and we'll start. I think, I like the orientation. I would say, a couple of my comments would be, I think that, in this case, I think I would be preferable if the building was shifted all the way up and so you only have one wall and now not something else in between. So we could double up on, on...
Makes sense.
Double up on a wall and I might be inclined to have that back wall, whether you put it in the center or it shifts all the way to one side or the other so that the view from the parking lot and the street of somebody driving by, like our police, that they don't have a...
Right, you'll have a blind corner.
Yes, sir. I would say the other thing that, and this would go for, for all of these as a consideration, just as a consideration, would be, I think, how it's all set up and the doors coming in, all that makes sense. What I would like to us to consider would be, as opposed to having to lock those doors up every night or whatever we gotta do, would be out in the front, the main alcove, is to have a, a one sliding that covers everything. That way we prevent somebody from hiding in that little alcove or sleeping there.
Like Brandon.
Similar to Brandon. That way you could lock that so it slides back and forth, so we don't have to worry about... The restrooms in themselves could then be left unlocked as long as we lock that outside door.
When we've done that, pretty like a barn style grid, it's locked, but then it's a visual. It is, we make a very nice attractive grid type. You slide it and lock it and you're like...
I, I could, I could see something like that, given, you know, now you just have to go around and each place you're checking, one thing and make sure it's locked.
We can offset the cost of the locks, really believe it or not, almost by doing a cost of locks in the grid, everything will offset almost.
Yes, sir. And I would say, and I think that, I like the privacy here just as another consideration to potentially have even less plumbing would be, and this is, everybody has their own preference, but if you're gonna have that little alcove and you've got the water filling station right there, is that the place where you put the sink and not have one in each little restroom?
Now, that's, that's heavily debated and there's a hygiene issue, et cetera. If it weren't for the diaper changing station, I'd feel better, but if you've got the diaper changing... I lost the argument in the office, we debated it. The mother was wanting arguments, you definitely need a sink if you got a diaper changing station.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with that. I was just, as a consideration.
We have, we have done that before. We moved them outside, yeah.
And I think that's the, the place too, if I'm having an event out here, let's say. And, you know, whether we have a sink there, but if that's a place to be able to put some type of hygiene station, jail or whatever, to keep me from having to go in to the, to that space on a day like today, where it's not gonna be a condition space.
I think a hygiene station would definitely be a good addition out there as well. That's a good point.
So I think moving that one back, sharing that one back wall with the wall that you have for the pavilion and maybe closing that, that other piece would be suggested.
We got a picture of that green door. I took that at Brandon, can I have a second? You see?
All right, I guess, next one. I would say maybe if, again, on the similar kind of thing, as opposed to having, what, what, what would concern me here, and not because it's a JL King, but just anywhere, is that now we've created those two little spots where people could easily get...
And what we may be able to do, we may be able to rework this where we get one common entrance.
That's what I'm...
I like just to look at that and see if we could get one common entrance, use that same...
And that's what I would potentially say here, Gary, if, you know, if we could work that out and get two common entrances, but then you go ahead and close that all potentially, and now you've got interior storage space for whatever potentially. But it'd be the same thing would be on those, those doors. And I would say, you know, on the back end, if that's gonna be storage, I would just say that if I were in Gary's position, I would be asking you all to, how do you design that for concession? And if it's gonna be, if this, I mean, if that's ultimately what we think it's going to be, is it, does it make sense for that door to be in the center? Or does it make sense for something to be, you know, blocked out just so we understand where that long-term plan's gonna be?
If you have any realistic chance that it will be a concession, our recommendation, we talked about a little bit, would be, is this becomes not the door, this becomes the blockout. It would be a little odd probably. We go ahead and stub up for plenty of drainage source in the slab, it's there. You don't have to come back and add it later. And then we would have doors at either end or above, but they would be there. That would be your doors now, but this is blocked out, so that would be the serving counter. But then when you do it, you don't have a lot of expense. And so we'd have spare electrical capacity and plumbing all right there in the slab at one time.
And I would say, you know, general same comment here, just having that one sliding, sliding door. And then the only, I think it makes a lot of sense where you've located this one, up against the street, right there. Only other, the only question I have, and again, so I think that would be very convenient for people in the, just walking on the street, maybe you wanna stop by and use the restroom, so there's convenience, just as an alternative, if it's, if it were to be located in the northeast corner of the property, which is going to be more for park. You have to come into the park then to be able to use the restroom. And now, nobody's hiding on the back two sides or there in somebody's private property that it could be seen. But I don't know, that, that's really more of a question, I guess, for Chief and others if they see that as being an issue. But I think, I think at that, at that site, one of those two locations, the one you chose or either that other, are probably the optimal, are the optimal two. But I would defer to Chief or anybody else having an opinion.
Cool. Anybody else, anything else? Okay, so takeaway is y'all are gonna look at a little bit of a redesign and do some pricing on...
And we're looking at the square footage in there, okay?
And as you come by, as you come by, this is, this is the, this is the barn door? Yeah, this is what's at Brandon?
Right, and we've looked at Brandon a little bit for some other...
That's, yeah, that's their door, that, that they're using.
And that's similar to what we're talking about, it's on, it's a barn door type.
Yeah.
Slides locks, it's open, you can see in there, it works well.
Yeah, it's really cool looking, so.
Well, thank y'all very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll take this and when we make those adjustments, we'll also have some cost figures to go with it, so we know where we are. Gary, anything else?
All right, thank you gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much, we appreciate your time today.
All right. All right, with that being done, we can go into discussion of agenda items, as, as I, I, I mentioned when y'all came in, we, uh, Ms. Kemp is not gonna be able to be here because she had a conflict, and so she'll come back at the next, uh, work session. So, we can go into our, uh, agenda for, for minutes unless somebody has something that they wanna talk about before we do that. Okay, all right, so we have first up, the couple of sets of minutes, any issues with putting those off consent, Chris, you've looked at them and thumbs up?
I have.
Okay. So, all right, how about consent for those? Um, I don't have any comments that I know that are scheduled, we don't have any introductions to my knowledge, and I don't know, does anyone have anything they wanna have listed on the agenda for, for comments at all?
One question for you, did, uh, Sky Farms call you?
No.
On the, uh, reroute project?
Oh, he told me about it, yes, okay, well, yeah, I can make that, yeah, I can make that, let me put that, let me put that down for myself for, uh, the reroute, got their grant. This is for the, for the, um, moderate affordable housing, so that'd be great, yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, um, public appearances, we have, um, Supervisor Miller will be coming for her, um, usual budget request and showing us, uh, things going on at the park, as well as this is their twenty year anniversary. So she's, I think, got a special presentation to go along with it. Um, I'm not sure why the, uh, AAU track and field are coming back, Lisa says they have submitted the same thing they submitted to us a couple of weeks ago, but they've gotten on the list, so we will honor that, their request, um, for whatever they're wishing to present. We'll have a public hearing on, uh, the conditional use for mobile home, and then we'll be having our first public hearing on the budget and tax millage. This is, the only thing that's on here is it relates to that, but do we wanna have a discussion right now, is, I think you've got a, you got a handout there?
I wanted to, I, I just wanted to share some, some things, um, with, with y'all, um, because we.
Just take one pass at it.
Take one pass at it, we are proposing a tax increase, um, and y'all had, um, y'all had this before where we, where we talked about, um, what that tax increase might do. But the, um, when we prepared the budget, the departments are essentially flat from one year to the next. And then this sheet shows you new monies in, where the new monies go, and then the second column shows you what a potential tax increase would be used for. And I know that you'll get a lot of questions about a potential tax increase, and, um, I wanna remind you that every mill with an assessed value of a hundred thousand dollars for a house, I'm sorry, a true value of a hundred thousand dollars for a house, every mill costs ten dollars. So a mill and a half on a hundred thousand dollar house is fifteen dollars, two mills would be twenty dollars annually, that's right. And then the other thing is people talk about our millage and whether it's high or not compared to other towns, and so I've given you some pictures here that show, um, the, the state's three big college towns, um, Hattiesburg, Oxford, Starkville. What the millage is in each of those towns, and, and look at Hattiesburg if you would, that is stunning what their, what their local millage is. Um, Oxford's is higher than ours and, um.
Actually, of all this group down here, everybody's higher than ours except Ridgeland.
And, and that's because of their sales tax that they, that they generate. And then when you look in, um, around this general area, what the, the millage is, um, and then again, those similarly sized towns. I would say that, um, Pearl, Madison, Ridgeland really aren't that comparable to us in that they are big retail centers.
They're boroughs, yeah.
Mm-hmm, they're, they're suburbs of Jackson, so they're not really comparable to us, although their, their millage, except for Ridgeland, is, is higher, higher than ours. And so I just wanted to throw that out, so that when people do say, but your millage is high, it, it, for the municipality, our millage is, is actually quite low.
And I, and I wanna say that, I think in this, and this is a, a perfect example of, we do the most with the least of any community I know. We have used our, uh, our millage very wisely and have spent very cautiously. Our department heads are very judicious with their expenditures and very cognizant of those expenditures, so, you know, I, I am proud that our department heads are as concerned about keeping their department budgets within a good re- reasonable amount and not, not exceeding their, their, um, abilities, our abilities. And have been doing so for a number of years, and I think this is a testament to that, when you look at other towns and see where we are in comparison. Um, we absolutely do the most with, with the least as it relates to, uh, taxes, so. All right, whispering among the group.
So, statewide, you took all municipalities, your bills are probably averaging around thirty-five, thirty-six mil. And probably, I, I know town Osprey was thirty-five, it was thirty-five, thirty-six mil, and so that, I won't say it's sweet, but that's, 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 that's what we always kind of thought that we, you know. And, and, and some was told in, in MMLBs and BCS, I mean, when, when we had, um, consultants come in, so they said, you don't, you don't wanna be the highest on the block, you don't wanna be the lowest on the block, you wanna find a reasonable, you know.
Thought behind the house, you want.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and, and we wanna, we wanna be wise with public dollars.
You're the lowest in a group of ten, you either manage money real, and we do manage money real well, or you're unrealistic about what it takes to pay for stuff, and, and you maybe sacrifice some things that you, that you should make sure.
And there's a little bit of both of those, but, and, and we don't like comparing ourselves to Oxford and, and I get that, but Oxford's millage, um, this past year was thirty-one point two-two, when ours was twenty-six. And that five additional mills gave them about two million dollars more to do things with.
Well, I mentioned also their retail sales are higher.
And their, their retail sales are higher.
Well, they get to keep all their sales tax too, but, um, I, I think if you look at this proposal that was a part of our discussion when we went through the budget process, this shows that, you know, it, this is the year for our employees. This is the year to, uh, fully fund our fire station, this is the year for us to add police, um, support. Um, I think this is, this is one of those, um, one of those opportunities, and I know next year would be far more difficult to make any adjustments, so I am in full support of this and would please recommend that the board consider this as something to move forward with, so, um, any comments?
Mayor, I need to mention one thing.
Yes, sir.
Lisa's probably aware of this, but it's, it's, it's kind of, sort of kind of budget related. Uh, and are you, I'm sure you're aware of that deadline Lisa on this NEMA thing, this form or whatever we're supposed to get in.
November first for the use tax.
Yes, so, so, so we can receive use tax?
Yes, and I have the, um, and I have, I did have the Excel spreadsheet ready.
I was in an MMLB last week, I said, make sure you mention, just mention it, you know, so.
So we definitely have a tickler file on that one?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We do not receive a dime unless that spreadsheet is submitted, so.
I'll, I'll be in charge of worrying about that.
Yeah, well, I think we all will, yes.
That's the interesting, the state led, the state law, we'd receive the money, but now it's in DOR's hands, and they're setting dates and saying, if you don't buy such, say, you don't receive the money. So I mean, that's, that's an interesting dichotomy or whatever on that, but, uh, I think November's reasonable, first reasonable, so.
All right, any thoughts on the budget that we wanna share now or wait till the public hearing and discussion?
I'll just, I'll, I'll go back to one more time, that the, the bulk of the money, including the pay changes, will go to, um, public safety type issues and living wage, um, for, for, um, the, the, those that have been at a, a lower rate. The departments that we have trouble recruiting and retaining employees in are the ones where you're gonna see those pay changes. If we wanted to do those pay changes effective immediately, we would probably need a two-mill increase, um, and, and you're.
Immediately, as in with the new budget year, as in October one?
As in that first quarter of the new budget year, somewhere between October and, um, December, yeah.
And we've also been issued a unfunded mandate from state legislature to increase the firm's, which, to us is what, a couple of thousands?
Just, just under, yeah.
So, and then they don't send any.
And that's a mill right there.
It is.
That's roughly a mill right there.
Oh, and one more thing, um, this is for Alderman Bond, um, the, the health insurance plan, the, the redesign is to take that deductible down to the twenty-five hundred dollars that you had talked about with that secondary level. We were able to do that and keep the, keep the cost about the same, so.
Okay, all right. Mr. Ashford, did anything you wanna add to any of that as it relates to employee compensation, et cetera?
No ma'am, I'll be able to give a full presentation at the next work session on the thirty.
Okay, okay, all right.
Mayor, with this, these two additional, this personnel, the fire department, this fully staffed, this last, this newest fire department, do we have?
Yes, that's, that is my understanding, that is an accurate, uh, statement. That will give us, uh, all five fire stations fully funded too. All right. Uh, let's see, I, I have no business, y'all, you should be so proud of me. Uh, board business, we have approval of the TIF for the Castle properties, this is coming forward. Um, tho- those documents are the usual voluminous TIF documents that are gonna be, uh, in the packet and should have lots of, um, lots of explanatory material with them. Chris, what I had looked at earlier was the, have you found it, did you see it? It's the transposition on the two, two six point three-six as opposed to two six point six-three.
That's right, and we'll get them to amend that TIF plan accordingly and resubmit that.
Okay.
It's just a transposition of those two numbers.
Yeah, that, and that's all it was, I'm sure, just a typo. Um, but the TIF plan is for the area that was, and is currently, the Garren property, which is on Highway twelve, at Highway twelve and Industrial Road. And, uh, this is, uh, Mr. Castleberry's, um, opportunity to see if he can acquire that property and, uh, um, make it a brand new, spanking new retail center. So that's the, that's the goal and that's the effort. Um, I don't know, do you know if, if anybody, Mr. Pace or, or, uh, Gurus is gonna be here for Tuesday night?
I hadn't heard, but I, I assume Mr. Gurus might be, given that.
I would assume so, so, and I'm going to, I'm gonna get in touch with him, make sure that they plan on being here Tuesday night for that, uh, informational session.
Mayor, do you want me to go over how it's different between the eighteenth and now?
That'd be great, if you would do that, that'd be lovely, thank you.
There, there are only three differences between what the board considered on July eighteen and what the board will consider Tuesday night. The one, first difference is that the TIF amount drops from three point four million to three million dollars. The second difference is that on July eighteenth, they were requesting that the city pledge a hundred percent of its sales taxes, and now the pledge is only seventy-five percent. The third difference is back on July eighteenth, the bonds were gonna be sized at fifty percent of the increase in ad valorem taxes, and now they're gonna be sized at a hundred percent of, of the increase of the ad valorem taxes. So there were, there were two gives and a take, or two takes and a give, and then it goes down from three point four to three, and then the pledge goes down from a hundred to seventy-five on sales tax, but the sizing goes up on ad valorem from fifty percent to a hundred percent.
And those numbers are outlined, you, you go around there, outlined, or outlined in there, um, and the storm, is the stormwater mentioned in there?
It's not, they took that out.
Okay, it is not in there, okay.
It, it has to, as applies, as it pertains to.
It will be addressed in the developers.
Right, it's not in the TIF document.
So in other words, they're not locked in by the TIF document like they were asking to be in July?
So we'd have a chance to, to modify, to change that, to give us a little improvement.
I think they were planning on, planning on, uh, doing, doing that.
Explain the property tax thing one more time.
Sure.
We pledged it, it's, it's a hundred percent now, so it fits.
So, the difference is in pledging and sizing. Pledging is what the city commits to pay off the bond funds, sizing are what the size of the bond issuance will be based on projected tax revenue. And so the pledge goes down on the sales side from a hundred to seventy-five.
Goes up on the property tax.
But on the ad valorem size, the sizing of the bond, so the bonds were gonna be sized based on fifty percent of ad valorem, now they're gonna be sized based on a hundred percent, a hundred percent of ad valorem. But really, that's not much, given that the sales are going down, so it's a net gain for the city from a deal standpoint, it's less expenditures or less pledging.
It shifts the burden to the ad valorem tax, which is, which is something that is more predictable and more collectible on the city's behalf than, than the sales team.
It does that for the county as well, county's one up, did it not?
It did.
Yeah.
And so the question, excuse me, sorry.
No.
And so, so, Chris, I wanna make sure, um, and I'll read it in the agreement, but we're still pled, we are still on the hook for fifty percent of the sales tax is what the expenditure will be. But the pledge, if all things go bad, as opposed to the city being on the hook for a hundred percent, now we'd only be on the hook for seventy-five percent, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
On the sales tax side.
And on the ad valorem tax, we are currently pledging fifty percent, and if all things go bad, we're giving a hundred percent, is that correct?
Uh, no, that's not correct.
We're pledging sizing a hundred percent of ad valorem.
That's right. Gotcha.
Across the board.
Across the board, a hundred percent ad valorem across the board.
We've pledged a hundred percent of ad valorem taxes to this, to this bond, this bonding, once it, once this TIF bonding starts up, it starts working.
Correct.
And it's predicted, we tell what, what that amount's gonna be, because.
And we can collect that either from the developer or from a tax sale.
I mean. And it's, the total value goes from three point four to three million?
Correct.
Oh. Is it better to discuss it here or discuss it Tuesday night?
Well, no, I mean, you can just, you can certainly discuss it here and, and, uh, Mr. Gurus, and, yeah, and then again.
Well, we look inside with you.
Yeah, well, no, this is fine, this is, that's kind of where, why we're here too.
Well, I mean, what we start, are starting with, and started with from the get-go, from the, from the courthouse, from the courtroom night, to, to, is that, that we, and every developer's gonna come in and ask us, that we, uh, that we, that, and they build a, their business model, they tax it, they can finance it, taxes it in order to float these projects. And, uh, three million dollars is a lot of money, and that's gonna require us, that's a, I don't know what the time, counselor, what is that, that'll be a fifteen year program, fifteen year payback. We're not pledging full faith and credit to the city, it's not like a Geo Vons, I get it.
No.
Oh, but we start with the baseline that we don't, at all, retail property developers are taxing, I just, I don't know, I still go back to the thing, is, is the start of Mississippi busting out the seams like we're doing, do we have to induce retail development by sweetening the bottom taxes? I mean, and I, I, that's not a tough question, I mean, somebody could say, yeah, we do, I, I just.
I, I'd like to say that in this particular instance, and every situation is different, but, but in this particular instance, what I think it lets us do is hasten the process. I, I feel sure that if Mr. Castleberry didn't acquire this property and redevelop it now and create jobs now and, and, um, keep a property from becoming a blighted property over time, someone would eventually step in and do it. But how long that is and who that someone is and what that's, what that would be is, is very much questionable, and, um, I, I don't like the idea of a big empty building sitting in the middle of Highway twelve, degrading, um, and waiting for somebody to come along and be able to take.
We'll remind the board though, that, that Walmart asked for property sales tax, and they didn't, this, this board did not approve that, and within thirty days, they bought, they got a permit and built, and we're collecting all property sales tax out of Walmart now. And one of the stores in this shopping center, and I'm glad developers not here, because they, they know, but Aldi is a German grocery store, but they are not, they're, I was in Memphis the other day, and there's an Aldi on Lamar Avenue. And so their market is gonna be a, a subset of our grocery shoppers, they're probably not gonna grow, that, that's a new term, but they're not, they're not gonna bring in lots of new shoppers from outside and increase the size of the stock, I don't think, stock and retail trading. The, the term was cannibal, they, they're gonna get, take market share from other stores, and part of the market share that possibly they take is from, from a couple of stores that are on the tax rolls paying property sales tax. So we're gonna swap people buying groceries from stores that are paying us tax to people buying groceries at a store that we're not gonna cash in most of, a significant amount of the money, in particular sales tax, if we, if we base it seventy-five percent of that sales tax. And I guess, I just want us to make sure that we know that, that this thing, and, and that the other stores may bring in people and increase, and criticize retail market area, but the grocery store's probably not, it's gonna move business around, and we may be moving from stores, getting tax rolled up to a new store that I'm gonna tax for, so.
And, and that was important to me, and that was, I'm very pleased that we were able to get the pledged amount down, because, because not all of these dollars will be new dollars, there's, there's absolutely no way they will all be new dollars. And so what we have to do, if we decide this is a project we wanna. And so what we have to do, if we decide this is a project we want to support, we have to be sure that we are trying to not dip into dollars that the city's already collecting and that we, we limit our participation as best we can to what is truly incremental dollars. That's where we didn't do our best with the Academy Sports Star crossing, whatever the name of that is. Because, because, and there was a lot of discussion about that, but in order to get that particular deal done. And, and again, that was an area that would have eventually developed, but who knows when eventually was, 30, 50 years from now? Or it may have never developed. So th- those are all things that, that you have to weigh when you're, when you're looking at projects like this. And the key to me is a project that's redeveloping in the area, a project that's creating jobs, a project that's bringing something new to the community that we didn't have before. I knew a, a, a business sector, not, not a particular product, but a business, like the, the Parker McGill automobile. That, that was a new business sector for us. Those, those are keys. And then how much do you want to speed the process up? Because these things, something will happen at some point in time, but.
Maybe. I would say I don't know the answer to that, quite frankly. And that's the, that's the challenging part about this is, you know, what, what's the right number? Is this something that we should consider? But when, as hot as Starkville is in terms of housing and, and blowing up, what is the last retail center that's, or any type of retail that's actually been built in Starkville that didn't have some assistance that wasn't named Walmart? Or something like that. And I'm just trying to think back through and I don't know what that, I don't know what the answer that is. I think at a time where brick and mortar retail is, is probably at a, one of the more difficult times, dealing with, having to compete with online sales or not. I, I think it, I think it puts more of a burden on places that are like Starkville and other places to have to look at what are all the alternatives to try to entice people to come here. And, and that's why I'm at least willing to entertain the, the idea. If it, if it wasn't for that, then I would, I would certainly prefer for them to come build it on their own and we get all the sales tax and get all the ad valorem tax. I just don't think that's the, fortunately, I don't think that's the climate that we're in unless you're a.
We're, we're in a more favorable climate than most municipalities they've seen. Because this, people want to come here. They want to live here. They want to shop. I mean, this is a destination. So we're growing at a time when most places are flat, are going the other way. And, oh, I mean, there are folks that I talked to that thinks that in Starkville, we think as long as it's coming out of the ground is good. Whether we catch any tax on it or not, that's kind of what folks think we think, you know? And, oh, I mean, I just think it needs to be, I've all, and I think this, I don't know, sense of fairness, I think it ought to be a, everybody says win, win. But I think developers ought to make some money. The Garen people ought to get fair price of property. We ought to get some profit, some revenue. If we can't get a reasonable amount of revenue, then, then it's incumbent on the developer to find a way to make the numbers work on this thing. And not for us to start inducing that, or passing along tax escrowings so the numbers start working for developers. Because the next, next company, I can tell you the next one coming is Pecana, and they're going to give us the same pitch. It's coming. You know, we can't do this unless we get a tax escrow and we have to move, relocate, and it's, that's coming. And they're watching what these folks, what this, these folks are doing. And I, and I, I've talked to Mark Castleberry. He's a really sharp down, nice guy. And he did a fantastic job with this, this convention center. That was hard. That was complicated. You're dealing with historic property, that mill and every brick and every piece, every bit of mortar mix, it had to be approved by the Department of Interior. I mean, that, that was expensive and hard, just hard to do. And he put all those pieces together, made that work. And that's where, to me, where taxes in his work. But just straight up retail, I mean, I don't know.
Mr. Almond?
I think my reason I want to listen at it, you know, how long would, would we like Log Garen just to sit there vacant? That's the bigger thing, that's the bigger thing, the big place. And how long would we like to sit there vacant? And if somebody wanted to develop, you know, I'm, I got a ear to hear.
Was that under assumption that they're going to close their plant here and we're just going to have an empty plant if we don't relocate?
Well, I don't know. Either that or they'll stay where they are and we will get nothing from nothing.
Well, basically what we're doing, and I, I, I guess I thought about this too. We relocated Garen to a new plant where they're going to guarantee no more new jobs. And they're, the jobs they're going to guarantee, if I understand correctly, if I'm wrong, is 75 jobs for five years. And not, not even the life of what we've got left on those, those industrial bonds out there that we're going to put money into that, that project on. And so I guess, I don't know. Everybody seems to be getting a good deal. I just want us to get a good deal too.
Well, and I think there are.
Find, pay, pay to do our budget and stuff.
I think there are tangibles and intangibles that go with this. And tangibles are obviously a new, I think, knowing Mr. Castleberry, high-quality project, because I believe he does A, A-quality projects based on the mill and based on other things that we've seen him do. And we get jobs from this. I think we get a synergy that comes with having some activity on the west side of town that we have not seen. Retail, I can't tell you when we have done a new, we haven't done a new retail center. We've revamped retail centers. Middleton Marketplace being one and the one where J.C. Penney was being the other. But we've not gotten a new retail center in 30 years. And with Garen being 1964, so how long ago was that? And that building is, is exactly that old. And so I, I applaud Garen. They want to make their, their move and they want it to be good for their employees. And, and I think that they see Starkville as a long-term place to be. But I do think that probably their thought about that is associated with being able to give their employees a new place to be and a new environment to work in, because I know that is an old, old building, an old, old structure. So I just think it, it inures to our benefit in a way that, you know, if it were going to, if we were, if we were where people wanted to be to shop, and I think they do, I think they'd love to be here to shop. I'd much rather be here shopping than going to Tupelo or wherever for, for some of the things that I think will probably come to this center. But I don't know that without some incentive, we're going to get brick and mortar, because that's not where things are these days, so.
And if I could jump in and say that at least one, maybe two of the stores that Mr. Castleberry is talking with has been looking at Starkville for several years, but have not pulled the trigger on it. And, and they are not going to build their own building. They're not going to make that kind of investment, they'll build a new space. But there's been nothing here that would suit their needs and allow them to go ahead and make a commitment to be in here. In the meantime, they have open stores in other towns in Mississippi.
Well, and if, if everything was up and up, and, and I don't mean that in like a, you know, under the table kind of deal. But I mean, if, if all things were equal, I would love not to offer incentives. I don't think incentives are necessarily fair, but that's the game people play now. And in order for us to be in the game, Walmart excluded, because I'm with you, I was not in favor of that Walmart TIF. And for all the reasons that we know, Walmart's got unlimited funds. I think that this is one of those that deserves that look. I do not regret one bit to Middleton Marketplace, the Cotton Mill. I think the car dealership was appropriate. So I think that the, most of the ones that have been done have been thoughtful and have been reasonable and have achieved what we needed to achieve, particularly in places that are high visibility entrance to the city. The Middleton Marketplace was a disaster. And so it is now a very viable entity. So I do think this is one of those opportunities and I, and I'm in full, in full support of it, so anything, anybody else?
I just will go back to the thing about that no one needed when you did not approve the Walmart project. I mean, I don't think, I think we picked on the board, didn't think it was going, I mean, there was sentiment that, okay, they're going to walk away from this and not come back. I mean, I didn't. I, I understood, they understood the numbers and what they were going to do. And, and they were, all Walmart did over there was decrease their share of the, of the grocery market. They didn't increase the grocery market in Starkville one bit. They just increased their piece of that pipe. And they had their right to do that. We just didn't need to incentivize them to do that. And I just, I don't know. This is one of 14 southeastern conference college towns. And we're, we've seen unprecedented growth in the student housing thing in the last two, three years. We're growing, growing, and, and college is growing and stuff. And I just don't know what, I mean, maybe they don't, maybe things don't develop. But probably some of them, we don't incentivize, they, they, they would happen anyway. And we're just, I think we may be conceding a good bit of tax money. And, and then here's something else to think about. When you build a store that competes against another store, you're creating to me an unlevel playing field. Because one store's paying taxes into the city, the other, the other ones, oh, the guy, they're recap, they're recouping there. They're, they're capturing their taxes and paying off their debt and paid off their capital expenditures. And that's an unlevel playing field. I mean, it just is. We're picking winners and losers on that to me. And I, I don't, I'm just, that's fundamentally, that's, that's a fairness thing. And the jobs that those places create are jobs, but they're not industrial jobs. They're not 15, 16 dollar an hour jobs with benefits, you know, with, with health insurance and pension plans and stuff like that. These are a lot, a lot of these are part-time jobs and stuff. And, but even, that's much, that's much free.
Okay. All right. We'll get to talk about it again on Tuesday night, so. All right. The next item is a proclamation, and this is, I could have done this proclamation. I, I probably should have just done it. But they wanted to have it as a part of the board. So this is just proclaiming that we're, we are supporting of the census and we want to have a complete census. So any issue with putting that on consent with anybody? All right. The next one is a resolution associated with the bonds for the new sports tournament facility. And I'm aware that that one would not be a consent item. Is that correct, Alderman Bond? Okay. And then the issuance of general obligation bonds. This one is the bonds for the remaining road projects. So we've already done the four and a half million on that, and this is a remaining 3 million. So is there any issues with that being consent? Okay, all right. So we can do that one. Airport, we've got a quote for installing a terminal for the fuel farm. Issues with consent on that one. And then the lowest quote for installing the, the jet hose and all the accessories that go with the terminal, so. Under code enforcement, this, this will be a calling on a public hearing for Brooksville Garden. And as y'all are aware, there was a burned-out building there that has yet to have been either torn down, refurbished or anything. So this is an opportunity for us to cause these people to take action on that. Any issue with that, Alderman Bond? This is in your, in your warrant, right? Okay, special event for, and we know we won't put, be putting those on consent, but this is the Travis Outlaw Day. We have several special events. Travis Outlaw Day, the Pumpkin Palooza, the Unwind Downtown, and then the Christmas Parade. All of those, all of those pretty much carries through the, through the remainder of the year, and we will leave those off consent. Preliminary plat for subdividing on Whitfield Street for, and no, and no public hearings associated with these for a parcel on Whitfield for R2 zoning. Anybody have any questions about that one? We want to leave those off consent and allow Mr. Dr. Kim to make a presentation on Tuesday night. Okay. Then we have another preliminary plat. I'll assume the same thing, and that's on Scale Street and then 3.81 acres on Industrial Park in M, in M1. Courts for the municipal court to attend training. Good for consent on that one. Finance, we have claims stock. It followed by the financials, and we are usually good with consenting on the financials. Fire department is the surplus on the ladder truck, so we can sell that and help make a payment on the truck or.
And I just, and the way that reads is that doesn't go to surplus until after.
Right. Right. We're going to have to wait till we sell it.
Until we get the new one.
Until we get the new one, right. But we can't get rid of it until we.
So this is just go ahead and getting that ready to go?
Right, yeah. Advertising for building official, Mr. Williams has given us his notice for the end of the year, 31st, is that accurate? Mr. Ashford, 31st?
Joyner.
Yes, sir. Joyner. Yeah, he was, he's been talking about retiring for the last 10 years. So, yeah, so he has decided it's time to go spend time with his grandchildren. So consent on that one, assuming everyone's good with that. Authorization to hire Jacob Davenport as a grounds work maintenance for the airport. Consent on that one. Courtney Cox for operations in the airport. Consent on that one. Any issues? And advertising for a driver in sanitation department. We definitely need to do that. And we also need to hire some folks for maintenance workers in sanitation. So consent on number five as well. And then we need to advertise. We also have another retirement going on, which will be December the 31st, and that would be cheap nickels. So we need to advertise for that as well. So good with that one. Consent on that one. And then advertising for a lead maintenance worker in Parks and Rec. So consent on the H R items. Parks is consideration of the design of the new restroom facilities. And we will put that off until they provide us new information. So we can just eliminate that one from, from the agenda, Lisa. And then a facility use agreement. Chris, you're good with that one?
I am.
So we can consent that one if there's no issue. And police department, Captain Ballard is going to attend a Kalia conference. Consent on that one. And Officer Dillon to attend a tier one combat shooting. Consent on that one. And then apply for 100% grant for fingerprint identification machine, which would be great. Consent on that one. And that would, we have no.
Oh, grant, this is a bond.
The grant, yes. And we have no indication of a need for an executive session for anything. So that would conclude our agenda. So we have eliminated a couple of things from that and got some things that look like they would be good for consent. So anything from anybody before we adjourn?
Council, when would the codes come to us, I'll tell you.
The unified code?
We had a meeting on that Wednesday where I provided my first round of feedback to them. And so we went through the first three and a half chapters of the code, which are basically the committees and how everything's going to work procedurally. The game plan is to finish that up by the end of the month. And to call for the first public hearing, was it the first meeting in September?
September, right.
And perhaps have a public hearing, the second meeting in September. But the issue is, I know Mr. Havlin feels that there needs to be some public input sessions.
Yes.
And so those, those may be in between there. So a very conservative estimate would be late fall by the end of the year.
And I want to get with Dr. Passan and see about you doing the version for a general public meeting for, for that, so. And I'll, I'll visit with him on when that might be a good, a good day or a good time, so. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you all. We'll adjourn this work session and we will see everyone on Tuesday. We also have the motorcycle rally at Fire Station Park today, 4:30. So all the motorcycles are going to go, come down Main Street and then go to Fire Station Park and get some barbecue from Little Booey, so.
I said football rally down those, probably every night, it was a good morning.
Yes, yes.
Y'all, y'all should be participating along with a number of other schools from the area.
Yeah, should be fun. Should have, have a good weekend, so.
What are we looking at? What are we looking at this year?
We got a winning, we got a winning team this year?
I'll let you know. Well, I saw him Friday. I saw him midnight last. Quarterback, I grew with his speed.
I bought my ticket, so we're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great weekend. We'll see you Tuesday.